So I don't think we have anything formal here. So if you guys just want to kind of give us maybe an overview and then we can ask questions if that works for everybody?
That sounds wonderful. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Luke Esser and with my colleague Nick Federici. We're here to present our proposal to you to be your first ever contract lobbyist as we understand it, which is an exciting prospect for us. My background is nearby from the left side of Lake Simamish. I'm a Lake Hills native who represented the 48th district in the state house and senate for eight years and then was chair of the state Republican Party. So my background is from the right side of the political spectrum and I've been lobbying for the last seven years. And I'll let Nick introduce himself, but he's been lobbying long enough that he lobbied me back in the day.
Yeah, Nick Federici, I've been lobbying in Olympia or I've been working in Olympia since 1992, lobbying since 1994. So I was sharing with your acting city manager, I spoke to a group of grad students the other day and you know, and they're asking advice about how to get involved in public policy. And I realized that I had been working in Olympia longer than any of them had been alive. And I imagine that that's probably true of at least one person here in the room as well.
I'm older than you, yeah.
So I've been lobbying, I've since 1994, I've had over 40 clients during that period of time. Luke is on the Republican side of things. By virtue of a lot of my clients and my predisposition come from the left side of the spectrum. Folks kind of give us a hard time sometimes in Olympia as the odd couple because of Luke's background from, you know, sort of having deep roots in the Republican Party as an elected official at a statewide basis and my long-term sort of bleeding heart liberal history.
The tie.
I'm just glad mom didn't dress us the same this point.
Unprompted, but maybe sub-liberal, I don't know. Our unconscious got the best of us. So again, I've been working Olympia since the early 90s in situations where there's been Republican super majorities and Democratic super majorities and razor thin majorities on either side and even in the tie when I know that Luke was a legislator as well in the early 2000s. And so, you know, we've seen a lot of different approaches to policy down there and I think are really well situated to represent you from that bipartisan basis. We both could work on a bipartisan basis, but at the end of the day, identity matters and it's good to have, I think, the roots in, you know, sort of the bleeding heart liberal wig of things that I come from and the Republican side that Luke has represented and is well known for in Olympia. We didn't come prepared with a presentation, so we just wanted to respond to your questions.
One final note, I noticed recently about my time in Olympia, how it syncs up with the city of Simamish. On the day that the election in November 1998, the city of Simamish was created, I was elected to the state house for the first time. So my roots in Olympia go back to that same day when the city of Simamish was created by the voters and interesting connection. And then I also read that the first ever Simamish Day was held at Bill Ream's East Simamish Park. And I succeeded Bill Ream's in the state house. I took his seat. He was a state house member after he'd been a King County Council member for this part of the world.
Surely it's a sign.
Who can argue? Who can argue?
Do you guys have questions?
What's the hot buttons that you're dealing with in the last year and what you see going forward?
Well, I'll start a little bit. It's been, the legislature has, you know, prioritized largely because of the state Supreme Court dealing with them a clear decision and fully funding education. So it has been a challenge since we don't do much education lobbying to make sure that other important needs like the needs of the city of Spokane, who we've represented for the last couple of years and our other clients, the Washington State Association of Local Public Health Officials is another client, don't get lost in the shuffle, don't get forgotten. So making sure that the whole host of issues that the legislature is responsible for get attended to while they do, while they did have to deal with the 800 pound gorilla has been the really big challenge of the last couple of years.
I think the stuff that's coming up this year, now that that's hopefully largely in the rearview mirror, though there's certainly a lot of local school districts who are unhappy with the way that either the property tax or the distribution of those funds was done. What are there, 296 local school districts? I think there's 296 different reactions to how the legislature did that. And so there's certainly going to be a lot of folks coming back, want just one little thing. And if you have that many one little things, it's likely that we'll see potentially a lot of activity around that. On mental health and homeless and housing issues, I think there's going to be a lot of emphasis of the decertification of Western State Hospitals so that they can no longer bill Medicare for their, and the governor's coming forward or developing a proposal around how to deal with folks both on an inpatient basis and on a community basis. So where do you locate facilities that where the clientele has previously been served at Western State Hospital? That raises a lot of hackles. At the same time, folks who can't get into Western State Hospital are on the streets of many of the cities across the state. And part of that reason is because of a lack of affordable housing at all levels of income. So I think that sort of not along with substance abuse disorders, chemical dependency issues is something that's going to be a very complex issue that they have to deal with and one obviously that has a lot of impacts on local governments depending on whether and how they fund that and how they distribute the burden of caring for those folks out in the community or in community hospitals.
Or they just mandate it with no funds, right?
That's happened plenty.
Yeah, the ever popular unfunded mandate. I think that the issue of how the state deals with the culvert decision by the US Supreme Court or the non-decision by US Supreme Court, decision by the, I think, Ninth Circuit around the responsibility that the state clearly has, that I think most folks reading that decision assume that counties and municipalities are going to bear the same types of responsibilities, even if the tribes or future wise or whomever hasn't yet sued to make that a reality. So how is that plan going to come together around partnering with the state, trying to get ahead of the potential future legal decision, collaboration or conflict with the tribes? I mean, there's a lot of stuff I think that's going to come up around that. And then how to pay for all this, right? I mean, the state is growing at an unprecedented economic rate and yet there are things like collective bargaining contracts that are often one of the first things that have to be taken care of to be able to fit all the rest of the budgetary pieces around that at the state level. And so how we, you know, how do those things get funded and whether they get funded, whether, you know, there's less money to distribute to local jurisdictions because the state retains more of that? Are there going to be specific options in terms of state revenues or, you know, options for local government to be able to look at ways to increase revenue? That's area I work a great deal on and actually have led up for the last half dozen years a coalition of folks that looks at what are our options in terms of both increasing the state's revenues and helping local jurisdiction or helping identify areas where local jurisdictions can have some options in terms of raising revenue, whether that be around infrastructure, whether that be around homelessness, whether that be around affordable housing, you name it. And so what are the types of, you know, liquor distributions, the marijuana tax distributions? So it's a lot of complexity there, but also some potential opportunities to tap into some of that revenue growth, you know, real estate excise tax is growing at an unprecedented rate. So how do local jurisdictions take advantage of that growth to help at the local level? So there's a lot of things out there that I think are sort of in the water. It's a matter of, you know, prioritizing what you want to look at and how we can help sort through that tangle to make sure that you get the revenues you need, the projects you need, and that the policy change that goes along with that breaks in your favor.
I've got two more questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So what we're dealing with is growth, duh. As you can probably imagine, I assume most of your clients in the cities are doing that. Do you have any kind of prediction of where the legislature is going? Because there was a bill last year about mandating R5?
R6.
R6?
Yep.
As an average or whatever. Did you get a sense? Were you involved with that at all last year?
I have been involved in that a lot, both on behalf of the city of Spokane, we've been involved in that, as well as my background. I've worked since 2000 in the affordable housing realm and so have been involved in those conversations, both on legislation as well as negotiations. The Washington State Realtors and Master Builders and Building Industry Association of Washington is pushing very hard right now for...
R4, no.
Yeah, for expanding what local jurisdictions have to do, right? And so I think around that, the city family, if you will, through the Association of Washington Cities has been having a robust conversation. I participate in the Human Services and Housing Subcommittee of Association of Washington Cities and we've had a number of meetings around that and also participated in the legislative committee. A lot of concern and consternation. I don't know that there's a lot of conclusion yet, particularly given the disparate impact on a number of, you know, different cities and different circumstances. But yeah, but the Realtors and builders are pushing very hard for, I would say, taking some latitude out of your hands. You know, there was a bill last year that was portrayed as around affordable housing and essentially it would have created building opportunity zones, but stripped local jurisdictions of the authority about how that was going to be done. So, you know, there's going to be a lot of trade-offs and again, I'm somebody who's been at those tables for, oh God, almost two decades now. I was thinking for many years, oh wow, that's almost two decades in that conversation. And so I think I've been in a good position to help represent your interests as those conversations, I think, heat up. And I think that will be one of the hottest issues in Olympia. And part of the conversation will be, how do you pay for that, right? You want, you know, builders and Realtors want faster permitting. Okay, how do you have the resources to hire staff to do things, you know, do end up things faster without, you know, without exposing yourselves to, you know, GMA challenges and so forth?
So along those lines, if you, you've got multiple clients, do you ever find yourself in a situation where different clients feel differently about one matter and how do you deal, if so, how do you deal with that when you're in talking with somebody?
And lobbyists, especially a contract lobbyist like us constantly has to be on the lookout for potential conflicts of interest. I haven't run across one with my clients yet because I do, I always run across with my clients, hey, I'm thinking about applying with this entity and we haven't had any trouble with the city of Spokane for the last couple of years. And we were delighted that a couple of weeks ago, the city of Yakima decided to select us as their lobbyists going forward for the next couple of years. So it's important for us to head on a swivel, to use a sports analogy, but it hasn't happened yet. But it is important for us to make sure we are, you know, thinking about those sorts of issues because we owe that to all of our clients.
So if that were to come up, how would you deal with it?
Well, I think it's all about communication, you know, immediately talking to both, you know, the clients where that potential conflict of interest might arise and, you know, making sure, hey, is this issue one where you're going to be on the opposite side of this other client? So I think as in many realms, good communication and early communication is the most important tool to use to address that.
I want to push you a little farther though. So then what do you end up doing? If somebody does feel opposite from a client that you're looking at, would you say, well, we're going to take this client, we're not going to represent your view on this whatsoever?
There's, I think there's a couple of different ways to handle it. If you did hypothetically have a situation where you had two clients for whom it was an important issue and they were on opposite sides, I think one of the benefits of having two lobbyists is that we could potentially put that Chinese wall between us and be, you know, one of us. And Nick and I don't have all the same clients. We have the municipal clients, we go after together and we also represent SEIU 775 together. The rest of our clients, we represent separately. So it'll be easier for us to erect the Chinese wall than it will be for some partners who have all of their clients in common.
And I honestly believe that, I have had situations where I've encountered, it's been many years frankly, because I've gotten good at sort of anticipating that and trying to head off those concerns as well as being careful about who I hope to work for, right? If there's an organization that looks like it's going to be in conflict with folks that I've worked with, I just don't, you know, apply for that obviously. And so I'm very careful about how to approach those situations. In the past, to be honest, the conflicts in a couple of cases, some serious potential conflicts, different attitudes about stuff have been able to be ironed out in a meeting or two, frankly, a conversation to say, hey, we want to get along, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to play tug of war and not just because I'm the lobbyist for both organizations, but because tug of wars and blood in the water mean more complexity and more difficulty for the process and the outcomes in general.
And confusing to the people down in Olympia.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, and so to me, resolving problems is what we do, right? In the most favorable way possible for our clients. And so try to resolve the initial conflict or potential conflict or even the anticipation of conflict as we go into legislative session. And then on the ground, hey, if we have something that really has come to a boil, getting people on the phone together, getting people in the same room together and talking through that to figure out what's, you know, what's doable. And again, in 26 years, I haven't had a situation where we haven't been able to figure out how to come up with that. And that's, I mean, not to be glum, but it's what we do, right? Is try to find those types of solutions and try to craft the options in a way that maximize everybody's benefits, which isn't always possible, but I've never had a situation where I've run into that intractable conflict.
Fair enough. Chris?
Yeah, sure. Can you give some examples of how you have paid for yourself and with clients recently, basically a return on investment? And maybe how are someone's opportunities potential for Simamish?
It's a great question and we, I think we did try to focus on that in our proposal because we have had a lot of success in helping to obtain capital budget appropriations and transportation budget appropriations for the city of Spokane. Over the last two years, more than $10 million for the capital budget and it's more than $35 million for the transportation budget. And I take particular pride that we do try to be resourceful in the sense that we try to look for alternate paths to get to the same goal because there are multiple pots of money in both the capital budget and the transportation budget. And the longer you've been around the process, the more you're aware of the different pots and the different avenues. And just as one small example for the city of Spokane, there was a little bridge in a park that was going to take $300,000 to replace. And we initially thought, oh, the park's money from the capital budget, sounds like a perfect fit. And we were having trouble with that. So we went over and worked the transportation budget and got the money there. So that resourcefulness, I think, and that ability that comes from the experience and, you know, for myself, 20 years ago, I was on the House Capital Budget Committee as a co-vice chair back when we were tied. It was actually 49 Republicans, 49 Democrats. So we had co-committee chairs, co-speakers, co-everything.
The worst of all possible.
Very little.
Everybody had veto power over, oh, it was...
And then when I moved to the senate, I was on the senate transportation committee. So I have a lot of experience with capital budget and transportation budget appropriations, as does Nick, but Nick also has some great experience for the city of Spokane, having worked on a very complex piece of legislation that I want you to delve into.
Evidently. We had a piece of legislation last year, last two years actually, regarding foreclosed and abandoned properties. And city of Spokane actually identified the issue there and we brought it forward to the Association of Washington Cities, eventually actually got it on AWC's legislative agenda. And a lot of cities recognized themselves in that description and didn't realize that there were possible resolutions to the fact that, at least at city of Spokane, there were abandoned homes or homes had been foreclosed upon, but nobody could identify who actually had the responsibility or the right to do something with it. Banks were saying, oh no, you know, we lent the money, but then we handed it over to that servicer. And the servicer would say, well, you know, we bundled that and, you know, and securitized it and we sold it to somebody else. So now, you know, those guys over there own it. And literally the city of Spokane couldn't get a handle on, we have this house, there's rats, there's trash, there's, you know, there's potential for squatters, which brings the potential for fire, police resources being put into that, literally fire resources a number of times having to come in because homes did catch on fire, including and of one of the city council members where squatters lit their, you know, lit the whole by fire. So, you know, really not just nuisance, but truly dangerous type of situation. And meanwhile, there was a Supreme Court decision here where the Washington State Supreme Court told the banks, unless you can prove that you have the right to enter a building, you're not allowed to do so. So even those banks who had previously been acting in good faith said, hey, we, you know, I don't, you know, we can't show that we, you know, that it's a foreclosure, we can't show that we own the note, so we're hands off. So the situation was threatening to tip over even further. So we brought it to AWC, a lot of different cities, city of Tacoma, city of Kent, city of Spokane, obviously, city of Seattle, a lot of municipalities said, hey, we have these same types of situations where we're having to send cops in or our code enforcement folks are over there all the time or, you know, we've had to send firefighters to deal with encampments and whatnot. And, you know, I didn't do it, but the huge room of folks that included banks and Columbia Legal Services and municipalities and industries that I never knew existed, you know, that literally, you know, are the ones that do the turnkey stuff to change the locks, et cetera, eventually worked out a compromise. And it took over 18 months of negotiations to be able to get there and a lot of fine tuning, but a lot of work group meetings behind the scenes that I participated in. But in the end, we came up with a solution or a set of solutions that Columbia Legal Services felt, okay, this isn't going to give the banks the authority to kick down the door if they can't show that they have the right to do so. They gave the banks the comfort that they could get into homes to secure them at times that they were concerned that they were becoming nuisance or rapidly depreciating properties. And municipalities could have the comfort that they could use their existing code enforcement authorities and some additional authority that we were able to get from the legislature to be able to protect those homes and work with both sets of parties, with both homeowners and banks. You know, and since the, you know, the foreclosure crisis about 10 years ago, it's hard to get Columbia Legal Services and the bank industry in the same room together, much less testifying kumbaya together, which we were able to do. And so, again, I think, long story short, talk about return of investment, I think code enforcement, police, firefighting resources, all will be saved to municipalities across the state because of us bringing this issue forward and bird dogging the heck out of it for the city of Spokane. Again, with a cast of thousands that put efforts into it. So I'm not saying I solved the problem, but I was part of the, I was one of the Ours persons, you know, pulling it in the right direction finally instead of spinning in circles as we did for about 18 months.
And one final thought on ROI, the denominator in that calculation is the cost and we've been paid $5,000 a month by the city of Spokane and we bid $5,000 for Yakima, which was accepted. When we saw that cost was one of the two most highly rated selection criteria for you, we talked amongst ourselves and decided, well, we, you know, we want to be better than a fair deal or a good deal, we want to give them a great deal. So we came in at $4,000 a month, which we think is, we'd be stunned if anybody came in lower than that among our competitors. So we did our best to allow you to provide some really good value to the taxpayers that you're responsible to. So we felt good about that.
Anything else? Good. Well, they've asked good questions. Walk me through what your efforts might look like lobbying, knowing what our 2018 legislative priorities were. And you already talked a little bit about the culvert.
Yeah.
Because we're clearly not the only jurisdiction that's saying, hey, we need money for this.
Yeah.
The city of Simamish is undertaking one culvert project right now, which is Zachuse Creek and we've got the parkway shut down while we drop in a giant box culvert down there. But we've got more than just that to go. We've got several other streams that are, have fish passage barrier issues.
George Davis.
George Davis.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's one among many that we need help with.
Yep.
And so how do you make Simamish kind of stand out as kind of a need? I mean, we have, I'd like to say we have like a unique need in that we have a very, the Kocany salmon, our native here, so it's not your run-of-the-mill Coho or whatever it is, Saki, right? We've got a really special breed of salmon here and a really a critical need.
Yep.
So how do we stand out?
It's, we thought about this one long and hard because you're right, a lot of people have Coho and Chinook, not that many people have Kocany in their neck of the woods. And, you know, because I'm kind of a government junkie, I was watching the hearing at King County on the stadium, $180 million issue. And right after that, they replayed the press conference where you were appearing at Ebright Creek on Mr. Pereira's property with my old law school classmate, James Dow Constantine. So a lot of people I've come to know. And it's clear that, you know, after the big culverts case, which Nick mentioned, where the state is going to have to come up with at least $2 billion over the next decade, that culverts are going to be very much a part of the discussion going forward in Olympia. And we both had a chance to talk to Senator Hobbs, who's the chair of the senate transportation committee from up in St. Homish County, and Representative Jake Fai, who's likely the successor to Judy Cliburn as the next chair of the house transportation committee. And both are, you know, understand that somehow, some way, they need to come up with the resources to help deal with that. Yours is unique in the sense that it's a different kind of fish, but there are literally hundreds and thousands of fish passage barriers all around the state. So I think it's going to be possible to build a coalition of folks to make sure that the state just doesn't fix its own problem. I think that's the biggest risk is the state will say, well, we'll take care of the state roads and the cities and counties, we'll wish you well. We'll wish you well. So, and I think legislators are starting to get that. And my old boss, Rob McKenna, was the one who wrote the amicus brief for the Association of Washington Cities and the state association of counties because they see that the next shoe that could easily drop would be those treaty tribes filing suit against the counties and cities for their fish passage culverts on the same basis. So it is an issue that's only going to become a higher and higher priority. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a big fan of trying to tap into as many pots as possible. So there are existing capital budget funds for fish passage barriers. There's, I had to write this down because it doesn't roll off the tongue, the Brian Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board, which has a pot of money. There's the Salmon Recovery Funding Board. But to get the big bucks that's going to be needed statewide, it's going to have to be part of some new revenue package. And I know the legislators, we've talked to the legislative leadership have talked about maybe a little bit of gas tax, maybe a little bit of carbon tax, maybe a little bit of something else, but it's going to have to, you know, as I mentioned, the state's portion alone is $2 billion over the next 10 years. So I think the key for us representing the city of Simamish is going to be to make sure we're building coalitions with other cities and counties to make certain that local governments are not forgotten this process and then make sure that among the allocation for cities and counties, that the Ebright Creeks and George Davis Creeks and the Zachuse Creeks of the world are on those priority lists for projects and the others that you bring to our attention as well. We're familiar with those because that was mentioned in your legislative priorities for 2018 and we saw some good information on the website. But I think those are the keys that I would identify.
And, you know, connecting the dots of that just a little more, I think we, you know, again, I met with Senator Hobbs and Representative Fai, meeting again with Representative Fai next week or the week after to talk about a number of issues as the two likely chairs, depending on how elections, you know, end up this year. I think we work with you and your staff to figure out what things look like, to do that type of inventory if it hasn't been, you know, or to take the inventory that you've done or build upon the inventories that you've done and go and sit down with them with a map, right? And sit down with the representatives that represent this area with this map and talk about where it is that's going to need resources, what the problem is that's going to need, that's going to need solutions. And then work, again, we participate a lot with the Association of Washington Cities' legislative agenda setting process. AWC is still in the process of internally having conversations about how to do this. But I can't imagine a scenario where AWC and Washington State Association of Counties don't have some sort of position moving forward, if not this year, in the very near future around what needs to be done and how to obtain those resources and having us in those conversations with AWC and the counties around that to make sure that as we learn more about the city of Simamish and what you specifically need, that those nuances are built into things from day one of any conversations because there's going to be a lot of conversations with the environmental community. with the environmental community and with tribes and the building community and, and, you know, and who's, you know, and a lot of people trying to shift the funding off onto somebody else. Bottom line is, how do you guys get the resources to step up to the plate? And you're already doing that with, uh, proactively, uh, uh, and, you know, again, working with the, with the Attorney General's Office and others that, uh, may have a legal role in whatever happens next, uh, to have those conversations and make sure that we're at the table on your behalf or that you specifically are the, uh, uh, at the table in a, in a, uh, public conversation around that to make sure that your needs are met, because you're going to need a lot of resources and, um, you know, and, and you want to make sure that you don't get elbowed out of that room.
And, and a lot of the work that you've done with your participation in the Kocany, uh, work group, I think will, will help. That, you know, legislators like to see those sorts of alliances and coalitions and having been involved and having the participation in support of the tribe is a very good development as well. So it was great to see Councilmember Ross speaking at that event and all the other participations, financial, that the tribe has made on the, the Kocany issue. And I just thought of, one additional pot of money is the Department of Ecology has stormwater funds in the capital budget. And I, I believe you have designated funds out of your stormwater, uh, budget for some of these efforts too. So there's another opportunity perhaps to get some matching funds from the state. So we, we definitely, again, I'll, I'm just always of a mind, try to find every conceivable pot where even a colorable argument can be made that it's, deserves funding and, uh, go from there.
Including things that haven't necessarily been used for this purpose before. I mean, Luke's, Luke's leadership, I think, on the, you know, riverfront park stuff that he talked about in Spokane, where he knew where the rocks were to kick over, right? Even funds that hadn't previously been used for those specific types of purposes, but were able to make the ar- he was able to make the argument about why those funds. And again, working with Senator Billing, working with Representative Richelli, working with Representative Ormsby, who are the three, uh, Spokane representatives that sit on the, uh, that, uh, represent downtown city of Spokane, and having them lead their muscle to it the same way we would talk to Senator Mullet or whoever the new representatives are from the fifth district or the forty-first district, as well as the existing folks from the forty-first district, uh, to make sure that all of them were all in on making sure that city of Samamish was well taken care of in that conversation.
Good. I do have another question.
Yeah.
So one of our other legislative priorities from 2018 was the double taxation, that we have a very small portion of our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
That has that burden.
Yeah.
So that's very unique to Samamish.
Yeah.
And probably doesn't get a lot of traction with a lot of legislatures. So how do you bring attention to that? Because really, to me, it seems like a pretty easy win if you can just get somebody to bite on it. But there's not a lot of attention to it because it's a very localized problem to Samamish. So what do you do in order to get attention for that?
Uh, I think you talk to the legislators that specifically represent that, uh, that part of your community. I think that's in the fifth, if I remember it correctly. If it's on the right two.
I think it's in the forty-first.
Isn't it forty-first?
I think.
So work with, uh, you know, work with Tana, work with Senator Welman, work with whoever the new representative is, is going to be there. Uh, you know, here's a new representative coming in. Uh, and he or she may not have a, a background in that, but he or she is going to want to show that they are representative, literally, of their community. So let's give them a win at the same time. Let's, let's, uh, um, and, and one of the, one of the little-known secrets, I probably shouldn't say this on the public record, is new legislators, it's inherently in the interest of the folks that run, um, uh, that run the legislature to make sure that their new people have successes so that they come back again.
Sure.
Right? Uh, build up a resume so that, so that reelection is as easy as possible. They love giving, uh, new members, uh, uh, plum projects. And so, uh, being able to utilize the, uh, newness of one of the new legislators and, uh, uh, and hopefully have him or her, uh, uh, adopt that could be one angle. Lot of other angles to do that. Uh, you know, Judy Cliburn is leaving the legislature, but not the universe. And so being able to talk to her and use her suasion with the, uh, with her former colleagues could be another matter as well, because she's the godmother of the, of the, the House Transportation budget. So I think there's a lot of different way, you know, a lot of different funding sources, a lot of people to talk to, to try to, uh, you know, to, to, try to do that. Uh, I think the double taxation issue that you, that you referred to, that's the fire district.
Parks.
Parks district, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah. The, there are, I know, I was thinking fire, so I, I looked into the RCWs, there's precedent in the fire district statutes for ways to carve things out so that you don't have that overlap and don't have that double taxation. That's what I was thinking, fire district. And so, you know, they are, uh, creations of the state and, and, uh, and I, I think you could copy the way that the statute reads for, uh, for fire districts and, um, copy that maybe with some, you know, with some nuance for the park district situation as well. Uh, and, uh, I don't know if there are folks that are going to be concerned about, uh, about removing that, whether the park district, uh, existing parks district might. But, um, I think that, again, identifying legislators that want to prioritize it as small and arcade as it might be, let's, let's get some little wins.
I'm, I'm going to guess the fall city park district would like to hold on to that revenue, but I, I think we would, first of all, look to see, are there other situations like that around the state? And if there are, might be able to build a coalition with other folks. Because the, the double taxation argument is pretty hard to, to refute. Of course, they'd like to keep getting the money.
Sure.
I, I, I get that. I think we all, we all get that. But trying to come up with a creative solution where maybe it's phased out over time rather than switched off overnight, you know, ho- hopefully there's a creative solution somewhere, trying to build a coalition and trying to find that elegant solution are the, the ideas that come to mind immediately.
Good. You guys have any other questions?
The parks districts, you know, they're represented with a lobbyist in Olympia as well, but they're not as good as us. So.
Of course not.
I do have a couple.
Please.
Um, want, the first one is, um, tell us a little bit about how you coordinate with staff as you move through the process.
However you want us to.
And, 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 and the truth is.
And it's an honest answer.
It's, it's going to be different with the city of Yakima than it's been with the city of Spokane. In the city of Spokane, we have council members that are very involved and, and like to be the first point of contact. And with the city of Yakima, it's clear that it's going to be the city manager and his, and, and an underlink who are going to be the first point of contact. So it's, as Nick said, what works best for you is, is what we are going to do, because we know that different cities are, are different and have different structures. And we want to, you know, tailor the way we communicate, uh, and interact with whatever will work best here in the, the city of Samamish, whether it's with council members, whether it's with staff. We're, we're happy to do it with, uh, wh- whatever structure works best for you.
Well, with the city of Spokane, we have, you know, during the interim, depending on, you know, immediately after session, I think we've been do- we did monthly conference calls, uh, since the beginning of July, uh, every two weeks, conference calls on Friday afternoons for an hour, sometimes an hour and change. We have three of the council members that are the legislative committee for the Spokane City Council, uh, the staff person, the lead staff for the, uh, uh, for the council and the legislative assistants for those legislate, for those, uh, uh, council members. So they're the deciders for the council on, on this. And sometimes we have city staff that participate in that for their pieces of it. But, uh, but the legislative subcommittee for the city council likes to, likes to, um, uh, be the executive function of, uh, uh, of that. Uh, uh, we're happy to do so. That's something we'll propose to do with the city of Yakima as well, uh, uh, as we start with them on the first of September, uh, to see what they want to do and who is appropriate to include in that. And again, we can brainstorm around how you want to do that. And I do that with a lot of my clients, right? I've worked, I've, my background's working with, with nonprofit organizations, uh, which often do not have the same level of professionalism as municipalities and elected officials in terms of decision-making, right? Uh, everybody has to feel good. Um, sorry.
Hey, we don't get to.
Um, and they're not as accountable to the public, right, in a direct way, the way that you are. So, uh, you know, different folks have different ways that they like to do things. So I, I glibly said, however you want it. It's true. I've had forty-plus clients in my time, and I've probably done things forty-plus different ways, just depending on nuance of personality and preference.
So my second one is, um, how do you plug in the council members into Olympia when you need them to come down? How does that work?
And, and for us, you know, we always want to start the process earlier on in terms of, you know, the, the fall before identifying what your priority issues are. And in the, in the city of Spokane, usually they kind of divide up the issues. There'll be a different council member who takes the lead on their different priority issues. So we're, we're kind of already thinking down the line that if we do get a public hearing for, uh, a policy bill or on, uh, an appropriation request, who's the council member who might come and testify that? And of course, we're, we're happy to be the, the, the testifiers if need be. But it's always great to have the elected officials be there in Olympia if at all possible. So we, we definitely, you know, kind of start early on thinking about that day that'll come in January or February or March where we need the, the testimony, or maybe we need a phone call to a committee chair to give a little bit of oomph to make sure a bill gets out of, uh, committee. So I, I think that's, that's kind of our, our, um, our strategy to start that process early as possible.
It, you know, to be honest, we are, you know, we've been working with the city of Spokane, uh, which is a whole lot farther away from Olympia than the city of Samamish is, and have been successful in getting, uh, council members down there, both for meetings with the legislative delegation as well as, uh, for hearings, uh, the, the, you know, chief of police and other folks, uh, from city staff, uh, to, uh, uh, city attorney, uh, uh, over to be able to, to, you know, highlight those issues that, you know, that has a, has an impact, uh, having an elected or senior staff person who is willing, certainly to come over from Spokane, but to come down from Samamish, uh, is a big deal. We can help, you know, obviously, uh, uh, with that process. I remember in our, in our initial interview, uh, with the, with the, the subcommittee here, one of the things that, uh, Councilmember Ritchie had raised was, you know, given that the city has not had, uh, uh, contract lobbying, uh, presence in Olympia before, in some cases, you don't know what you don't know, right? About, I mean, I, I think that I'm a big believer in the, uh, the, the, uh, famous American philosopher Satchel Page, who said, it's not what you don't know that can hurt you, it's what you think you know that just ain't so, right? Uh, and so, uh, I, I think having us help, uh, uh, let's say demystify, but just establish what we see happening and how things will play out, um, and the different, and, and helping you prioritize sort of how to approach the legislature, uh, seemed to be something that both, uh, Councilmember Ritchie and, and Councilmember Valderrama had raised in the, in the, uh, in the conversation that we initially had in our first, in our first conversation. So, and happy to do that. Ha, ha, you know, figure out what do you want it? Again, what do you want it to look like? What is, what's going to, what's going to be in your comfort zone? Is there one of you, uh, that wants to be active and coming down to Olympia all the time? Super. Is it something that you want us to be, uh, doing most of the leg worth, continually bringing folks down when it's absolutely necessary? Super. Uh, again, depends on the nuance of the issues and the personalities.
Can I follow up on that a little bit? Would that be more at the public hearing stage or would that be in the background stage before the bill comes forth?
Both.
Both.
Yes, because one, one area where we had a lot of success with the city of Spokane is we had a great meeting with local legislators, including local legislators who don't represent the city of Spokane, but are nearby and are impacted by the issues. And we met with them in November to let them know, here are our priorities for the year, and, uh, so that you're aware of it early and often, and get the ball rolling so that it's top of mind for them. When we come back in January as lobbyists and touch them again, it's, oh, it's an oh yes, rather than an oh what response. And so I, I think that's, as Nick says, it's, it's both. They're both very valuable, but that early contact, uh, is very important. And one thing we also tried to do is, we asked the local legislature, hey, what are your priorities to, to try and make it a real, you know, two-way street that it's not just what, what are you doing for us, but showing a genuine interest in what they're interested in? And is, is there some synergies between what they're interested in might be helpful for the city?
I mean, to, to your point about the, the parks district, you know, double taxation situation, it's not the sexiest and, and most, you know, gripping issue, but it's an important issue to the people of the city of Samamish. There may be an issue that one of the local legislators has that is, you know, it's not going to have a huge material impact on the city of Samamish, but it's still positive to be able to give them the backup that they need, uh, on priorities that they believe are going to be helpful to, to your community as well.
So we're just asking questions.
You have any questions, Gary?
Just to put you on the spot, isn't it?
I apologize for getting in late.
Not a bit.
Good to see you again.
She's recovering from a wedding.
I know.
I'm not home.
Congratulations.
Our son got married this last weekend, so I still have company in town.
Well, thanks for.
The celebration continues.
Yes.
Well, well, one, one point I did want to make, and I made this point in the, the original presentation in terms.
We love this map. We love using this.
I think we're going to be able to offer a level of service that no other of our colleagues will be able to, because I live right here. And, you know, Google Maps usually tells me, if, if there's no traffic, ha ha. It takes about, about twenty-two minutes either direction to get to City Hall. So during the interim.
Which would have been faster if there was a bridge, which I heard somebody brought up.
I haven't heard a thing of it.
Do you remember the first time the bridge was brought up, which was, I think the first time the bridge was brought up was back in the late twenties or the eighties.
Well, and, you know, there were proposals for a third Lake Washington Bridge a long time ago. So.
Yep. And then they, that was when Lake Samamish came out, and it was the Save Lake Samamish Group came out, and they, they immediately put a stop to any bridges being talked about over the lake because they were not going to have any, uh, they were against having any, uh, gas or any of that, that stuff that was going to be, they were afraid it was going to come along with the bridge. And so, yeah, that was all bad news.
One of those times where I'm glad I'm no longer an elected official and happy to let others make those, make the difficult decisions. And then we'll do our best to carry out your direction in, in Olympia.
Good. Any other questions or?
Maybe a quick close. You're the odd couple.
Yep.
Something brought you together. What keeps you together? What, what, what?
Well, I, I think, uh, maybe a similar sense of humor. And I think there are many professions where you need to have a sense of humor. There's not many where you need it more than politics.
No doubt.
Yeah. I, I, I think, you know, uh, you know, Nick is, is a, a bleeding heart liberal who holds many ridiculously left-wing positions, but he's still a good guy. And I like working with him a lot. And it is that, is, I think that core respect is what keeps us together. Plus, frankly, there's, there's the practical part that, as, as Nick mentioned, we, we both can work bipartisan. I work with Democratic legislators all the time. Nick works with Republican legislators all the time. But before they head onto the floor of the legislature, there's four rooms that every legislature go, goes into. The House Republican Caucus Room, the House Democratic Caucus Room, the Senate Republican Caucus Room, or the Senate Democratic Caucus Room. And there's no getting around that. On some issues, they do divide up, and it's useful to have those deep relationships. So a little bit of practical, little bit of philosophical, I guess.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah. And I think we, I mean, we, we, we worked together, uh, for a couple of years for, uh, SEIU seven-seven-five, and, uh, I think established a good rapport there and a good tag team and found that that was a good sort of yin yang, um, uh, culmination. And then as, as opportunities have presented themselves that seem like they're good fits for, um, for our expertise, we've, we've repartnered on that stuff. I usually get asked that question about my wife and I. I've never been had that question asked. It was like, I know those answers much better than.
Since I know it's about closing time, I'll just say, thanks again for the opportunity. We know that other smart, talented folks have applied for this position, so we, we appreciate the opportunity. We, you know, we hopefully presented some reasons. We think we're the, we're the best fit. And I'm, I'm familiar with the city of Samamish, going back to my days, working for Rob McKenna on the King County Council, when I first learned that, oh, there's this plateau where the, the county decided to put urban growth on a rural two-lane road system. Boy, that, uh, that might not be real easy to deal with going forward. So I, I don't envy you all the challenges you, you face, but it would be our pleasure to help you deal with them going forward.
Thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I saw you guys in Yakima, you guys, I watched you work a room.
Well, they, they treated us very well.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
It was very exciting.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Great to meet you. Thanks so much.
Councilmember, a pleasure. Thank you. Councilmember, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I got a.
It's appropriate.
No.
So I'll call you back. Thank you.
They're at a party.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was like.
No, no.
Yeah, and hopefully not crying.
That's a big responsibility.
Oh, no, he's sleeping.
So that's the case of you wanting to see the other guy.
Yeah.
She always looks at the dogs, see if they're sleeping, like a child.
There he is.
Aww.
Just a lump of fur.
It's good to give him a great early.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I feel much better than you said me. So is the other one just out in the hallway?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Did you want to wait until we want to bring him in right now? I would just go ahead and bring him in. He's ready. We get out of here 20 minutes early, I'll be excited.
Yeah, me too.
It's good to see you here grilling potentials.
So one thing, as I'm sitting here, I was gonna send an email Glenn, is I think it might be wise to at least tentatively schedule a legislative committee meeting. I think the council may run away on whether they want the, the committee to come up with legislative priorities, but I think we need to have them set so that as soon as we end up hiring a lobbyist, that they can get to work on whatever they are. They are right now. That's, that's what made me think of it. It's like, we need to like.
Totally agree.
Get going, so.
We'll get something scheduled.
Okay.
I'll have Debbie or Mike put something together.
Okay.
Starting tomorrow, we can put something together.
Yeah, I think just finding a date because it's myself, Jason and Romero. But I just think we need to start talking about what those priorities are, if they're even going to be different from what we had last year.
Well, there might be a few.
Well, there might, but I think.
Based on what?
Yeah, I mean, but it'll be for the council to decide if we want to go long again or stay short.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Okay, good.
Hi, I'm Todd. Cody.
Hi.
Good to see you, Cody. Ken Gameless. Hi there.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Ken Gameless. I'm Aggie Taylor.
You're a conservative, some conservative. Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Devere. Everybody here tonight?
Who was on the committee?
Jason and Romero and myself.
Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe he just emailed and said she'd already met them in their committee meeting. What committee meeting? I don't know.
Yeah, no, we just met Karen and Jason. Hi there. Karen and Jason would want to do it again, huh? Oh, no, Jason is actually assigned.
Yeah, but I'm saying, is Jason, was Jason here?
No, he is. All right, well, let's get started here if we can. Is Glenn, did Glenn leave?
Nice to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you.
Is Glenn gone?
Gentlemen, I'm gonna sit here.
Bring it out here early, we're all gonna be happy, so.
Is that a hand?
No, no. You can give it six extra minutes, so.
But you might get extra points.
I don't know where Glenn went.
Trying to find it.
He sent that legislative to the ORE.
Great.
The other thing on your legislative stuff originally, when you guys first did it, it was really long and then when you shortened it up.
We did.
Will we cut out?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll look at it all at the committee, I think. Well. Okay, so we'll get started. I think what we did, I just turned the floor over to you guys initially, just give us some information about yourselves and what you plan to do, and then if you don't mind, we'll just ask a few questions.
Sure. So you just want us to go ahead and start? All right? So I mean, I'm assuming you have our packets, you'll probably have resume and stuff. My name's Cody Arlie. This, last year, I think was my 22nd legislative session and about five years ago, I said, "Stop saying it can't get any stranger" because it just got every stranger every year. So, you know, my first, first round, I lobbied for the State, for State Way Firefighters Union for several years and then switched over and went out on my own and have been doing this now on a contract basis for, you know, the last 15 years or so. Have two other local government clients, city of Seattle and city of Tumwater. There are a lot of RFPs out this year, I'll be honest. This is the only one that I submitted a proposal for. I thought it very interesting that you had not had state lobbyists before and, and that's a situation I walked into with the city of Tumwater a couple of years ago. And it's been really rewarding with them, just setting up their program for the first time and, and advocating for them when they hadn't had a team before. So just specifically why Samamish and why this is the only one I applied for. Oh, thank you. That's what's really appealing to me and that's the way, you know, this was the one that was interesting to me to apply for this year, so I'll just stop there.
My name is Jeff Devere. I'm a contract lobbyist and most of my career has been spent in state government. I started with the State Patrol here in Bellevue and actually was up here quite a few times with my old Thomas Guide trying to find things. So I'm a recovering trooper, but during my time with the State Patrol, I also did legislative work for five years on behalf of the State Patrol, which availed me to experience a lot of different things because we just think of people getting stopped for speeding, but the State Patrol has Crime Lab, Fire Protection Bureau Services, so much breadth in that job that I was able to get exposed to a whole lot of the legislative arena. And I retired from there and went to work with Labor and Industries, which I had been the Human Resources Commander at the Patrol for a short time and kind of fell in love with managing people, but also managing injuries and safety programs. And I was involved in that at the Labor and Industries and got a real sense of how some businesses, some governments aren't doing as good a job as they could in managing their personnel and managing their injuries to save themselves money with their insurance. And then I was at the Department of Licensing for about two years and I was Deputy Director. I was in charge of operations at the Department of Licensing, very rewarding job. Had to work on, our, our strategy for legislative was to get the Real ID law passed so that we could all get on airplanes come October 2020. So I didn't have a lot to do with passing that at the legislature, but we certainly did back at home. So I'm very happy to be here. This is a continuation of my public service, I see. I've, I've done public service my whole life. I'm very used to playing roles in which I'm not at the forefront. I'm the person who's helping this body, help your citizens, get what they need, have the services they need and enjoy the life that they should enjoy by way of, of your governance. It's not about me or about Cody in my eyes. This is something that it's a labor of love for me to do good things so that people can have better lives. And that's why I applied here with Cody and I'm happy to be here.
Can we ask, or can I ask kind of what you see or saw last year hot buttons and what your prediction for coming up this next year?
Oh, for the, for the legislative session, without a doubt, McClary. I mean, that's dominated the legislature for the last six years, you know, finding a solution to, to school funding. They thought, thought that was solved and thought it was solved coming into this session of having to, you know, appropriate another almost billion dollars to it. So, and still thought that was solved this year and now, you know, we're hearing more problems, but by far that's what's dominated it, has been, has been the McClary decision and complemented by the fact, or complicated by the fact, the recession hit in 2008 and, you know, over three successive years, we cut almost $15 billion out of the state budget. And so that, those, those two revenue and McClary decision have dominated things for the last, for the last several years.
So what we're dealing, you want to respond to Jeff or?
I do. I, I think for next session, one of the things, and I know this is one of your legislative priorities, is culverts for, for salmon and fish. And we all know about the court case in which it was ruled that the state has to fix the state culverts by 2030, which right now that's estimated at $3 billion. That's going to be a, a major conversation in the legislature, both in the transportation committees and I think in, in Ways and Means and the General Fund as well, because it may not just be transportation dollars that, that are in that. So that's something that's, you know, very relevant to what you have here, some of the things that you have needs for that I think is going to be part of the conversation anyway. And I think we offer a unique ability to, from our experience in the transportation committees and some of the things that are already going on with culverts to help with that.
So if we put a culvert under every road, we can get it financed?
There are so many conversations going on with that. Some folks are saying, well, why don't we just take care of a drainage or a watershed all at once? It doesn't make sense to do a state culvert and then, you know, a city or a county or private can't afford to do the next culvert that may be, you know, half mile away. So there's a lot of conversations going on, on what does that court ruling really mean for everyone? Because it's not only the state that has culverts. And what comes next? And I think that was one thing, you know, as we got to look more at Samamish and what your potential legislative agenda is, I think it really played to our experience. Culverts was one, you know, some issue I worked on for three years now on different levels and just spoke to the Speaker Chops Chief or Vice Chief of Staff today because he's convening a work group just to work on the culvert issues. And that's not public yet. That's a work group that's probably going to convene here after Labor Day weekend, but he's tasked in this work group going to be led by some of his folks, some House Republicans, and then also Hillary Franz, the Commissioner of Public Lands. And they're going to work together, two meetings between now and the end of the year. One meeting's just trying to get an idea of what the size of the problem is and, and how much money we're going to talk about. Because like Jeff said, we're talking about state culverts. We know there's as big, if not a bigger price tag to do the local government culverts. So if, so then their second meeting of this work group is going to be trying to come up what a potential funding mechanism might be to try to come up with that money. Because when you get in the B billions of dollars, there's not much revenue streams you can look at to get that kind of money. And see, that fits in hopefully if they're, you know, coming up with some kind of a solution on the state level. I, you know, there's already talk about doing some kind of a smaller transportation package this year. I know both Senator Hobbs and, and who we think may take over the House Transportation Committee are both looking at some kind of small package to try, to try to do a couple specific projects. So the idea is maybe with this work group, we can tie in with that and maybe, maybe you could do a penny, two penny. Basically, a penny's about a billion dollars on a gas tax, so maybe you could do a penny or two there and try to come up with some revenue to fix the culvert problem as well.
So, I'm sorry, I told me your. On the culverts, you've got the state problem. How do you get the money grant form or otherwise to the local level? How, how are you going to influence that?
You know, and, and I mean, right now, I don't think there is any way to do that because when the, the state passed the transportation package in 2015, I think they ended up doing about 300 million for the culverts in that package, but that was all aimed at the state culverts. And out of that, DNR has got all, because they've got one culvert left, they have to do and theirs are finished, but DOT has a ton of them still to do. So I think that's what this work group hopefully will morph into is how are we going to help solve? Because the real problem we're after here is not putting culverts under the roads, it's fixing the salmon problem. And, you know, we've all watched the work here the last couple of weeks and what's going on there. You know, ultimately what they're trying to do is fix the salmon run and save the salmon. To do that, like Jeff said, we need to do it more holistically, maybe do it by watershed instead of just checking down a list of culverts. But you also, if you're going to fix the state problem, you're not going to fix the real problem unless you look at the local government culverts too. So that's why we're hoping by our participation in this culvert task force, that also will work into including potentially something in this next transportation package.
So one of the biggest things we're facing, and I hope you, you're familiar enough with Samamish, is the growth that we're being allocated or forced to take, for lack of better words. And I'm trying to figure out where the legislature is going at the state level. Do you have any prediction in that regard? There was some bills last year that didn't go forth too far, so I'm kind of curious what you think and what you're thinking now.
As far as growth, what they're thinking about growth?
Well, I mean, the, the R6 minimum last year. That was put forth and then that kind of, I don't think it made out of committee, did it? But, but it was still out there and I, I'm trying to figure out where the legis, state legislature is going in that regard. Because GMA is, is our biggest issue that we're facing with, with the growth.
I, I, well, you have a moratorium right now. I know you're struggling with that and I know that's been the topic of, of your council meetings. I, I actually showed up here about 1:30 today and I drove around your fine city. And I went down East Lake Samamish partway and I went down 244th and I looked at what was being built and some of the things that you talked about in, in your meetings and I thought there's some challenges here. Not unique necessarily, there's many cities across the state that are all in the same position that you are, which is where I think AWC, the Association of Washington Cities, is very important and being connected with that group, not only with that group, but other lobbyists as well. Because other lobbyists that are working for cities, you don't get anything done in Olympia unless you have friends. The system is designed so that a bill doesn't pass and any budget idea is extremely hard to get included because there are so many hands at the trough to try to get that. So I think it's not only important to be involved in, in the Association of Washington Cities, to have coalitions to address problems that are common because that's your best chance of passage, to get some relief, to get some help. And also to make sure that when you are going to talk to the legislature is, is having your, your local delegation on your side. If, if your relationships are not what they should be, they can always be enhanced and we see that, I think, as one of our main duties to serve you is to make sure that your delegation knows what your issues are, fully and fully informed so that if you're in a very unique situation here with three districts, you have the fifth, the 45th and the 45th, you have nine potential supporters for your issues and many, many cities can't say that. So I think it's really important for us to help enhance those relationships, help them know what your issues are, have them help us with strategy on how to help the city of Samamish in culverts or transportation issues. I know that almost, what is that, 97 or 98% of your commute is single occupant vehicles coming down off this plateau. And sound transit's not an immediate answer. In fact, it's never going to be an answer up here, right? Because it stops in Issaquah and stops in Redmond. So I think it's really important that, you know, we help you strategize what things can the city do by itself, who can you partner with, how many different funding sources, be it grants, state, federal, whatever it is, what do you need to do to set yourselves up so you have the best chance to get those, to come up with solutions that it's, one solution's not going to work. And I think we all know that transportation is such a complex issue that it may be some ride sharing, it may be more parking rides, it may be some change management with folks just carpooling, that may help. It may be more bus routes, there's only three bus routes up here. That's not enough. So it's partnering with Metro, it's partnering with Redmond, partnering with Issaquah to see how can we come together to come up with solutions that help the whole region. It's really nice to see the mayors in, in the Pusitown Regional Council and the executive as an alternate. I think that this council needs to become more involved in things like that, as much as you possibly can, because you're now talking to your sister cities and you're strategizing on what do you need, how are you doing it? Here's what we need, how can we work together? Because boy, if you come up with a coalition to the legislature, that's much better than, than going by yourself, for sure. I don't know if I answered your question, it was really.
Well, I want to follow on on that because it kind of leads into the next thought I had. I'm trying to figure out what, what you guys do if, because let me use an example, we're on the fringe of the urban growth area, right? So our issues might be very different than a Redmond and even in Issaquah, even though our neighbors, I guess they're on the fringe too, but we, we think of ourselves differently. So what happens if you're representing one client that feels one way? And we see this in the AWC as well, right? They have a position, we may feel differently and I'm trying to figure out how you would deal with some tension between cities and clients that you have that may have different positions on different bills.
Yeah, are you talking specifically maybe a, a conflict with a client we currently have?
Yes, exactly. Or a potential conflict and just how, how would you deal with something like that?
Yeah, and I think, you know, the good news geographically, you don't, the, the only, you know, no one contiguous to you here at least, that would be a problem with. You know, my other local government client, city of Seattle, maybe not a lot of conflict there, same with the city of Tumwater, but I think ideally with the fact that we have Jeff with two of us, if there's literally a conflict we can't resolve, and I'll tell you honestly, every time, whenever it's arisen that there's a potential conflict, I've not had one time when I've been able to sit down with both parties and work through so that the, the conflict got resolved. I've never had to go beyond that. If that was the case, we could split up as, as far as who was leading on, on that specific issue for the city. You know, and just real quick on your growth management, I've worked a ton on growth management the last few years. I think the biggest mistake that some people feel is like, I think it was 91, Growth Management Act passed, and there's some feeling like that came down in stones from some mountain and should never be, should never be altered or fixed. And I think we're finally seeing so much pressure on that, that people are realizing that we've got to do some changes, we've got to modernize. You know, it's been 20 We've got to modernize, you know, it's been 27 years now, I believe, since GMA passed.
Is there an opening in Olympia to do that?
There is, there, there, there finally is. We, we saw a couple of bills this last couple of years passed that made some tweaks to Growth Management Act. One was on school citing, which I don't know that that was an issue here, but.
Well, it is for our districts.
Was it? So it was a big issue that, you know, we finally come to an agreement that not everybody was in favor of, but just looked at, look, it's been at that point, that was two years ago. At that point, it had been 25 years, nothing had changed on it and the realization we needed to modernize that. And so school signing is one that we have, we have seen change.
Based on the fringe, you would think, right?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So yeah, just to go back to that one real quick on, on the growth management.
Any other questions? Chris?
Return on investment. Can you give some examples of some big success stories for some of the counties?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll jib at them. One of the best things, um, most roaring things I ever worked on was the transportation package in 2015. You know, it was a record sized package. Um, at the time we did about six, 13 cents, about $16 billion package. Also included that was the Sound Transit three. And you know, that was an incredible coalition that took environmentalists, labor, of Republicans, of Democrats to get that over the finish line. And had many potholes, no pun intended, um, on, on, I didn't do that on purpose, but it popped up. You know, um, along the way. And so, you know, that was one that we literally worked on that for three years with diverse stakeholders. And it was one of the best, um, um, and one of the few frankly bipartisan solutions I've seen in a long time in Olympia. Um, I've been around long enough now where I remember the times in Olympia where compromised, we did it all the time. We negotiated, compromised all the time. Turned very polarizing now, um, it has been. And I think the transport package was, was a, a change and that was kind of a shining moment where everybody had to pull. The Democrats had to provide votes, Republicans had to provide votes. And you know, I think in the end, we got a good package, um, at the time. It's, it's amazing me that we're already sitting here talking about potentially doing another one. Um, but I think that would be one. The other example I'd use and again, Tumwater, um, I've represented them for three years now. They had never had a lobby team before. They had tried several times on getting some funding for their historic district, also on getting some transportation funding. And, um, did a lot of hard work on their own, couldn't get over the firm finish line. And so just helping them the last couple of years, we've got a lot of capital budget funding for some of the historical projects that, that they're working on in the city. And also some, uh, some of their transportation stuff.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. So I'll come at that a little bit different direction. And I think some of the, the most important service that we provide and can provide to you is strategic advice. And that it doesn't necessarily means tens of millions of dollars each session. That's extremely hard to do. It may be easy to do with some of the bigger cities who may already have exhausted their taxing authority. They may already have transportation benefit districts, they may already have done all of those things. But it's us taking a look at where is the city of Sammamish? As far as can we go forward and realistically ask for things to help the city? Because one thing that legislators really like to see is what has the city of Sammamish already done for themselves? Have they exhausted all avenues before they come to the state? Um, to, or feds to ask for more money? And I think that's a strategy and it needs to be both short term and it needs to be long term. Because as I said earlier, the legislature, in my experience, is designed so that no matter how good your idea is, it's designed to fail initially. It's very hard to pass a bill, it's very hard to get something in a budget. So you have to have a good idea, it has to be backed up by data. So I'm really, really happy to listen that as you're going through your concurrency discussions, that you're collecting data everywhere. Because that's extremely important when you're talking about that, those kinds of things. So I think it's, it's coming up with a strategy that's both short term and long term. And I think another thing that's extremely important is what are your option As, your option Bs, your option Cs, Ds? So that you might not get this, this session, but in our long-term strategy is we want to be here. What pieces of that pie can we get? What other ways can we do it? Who else can we partner with to, to do those things that are priorities for you? And I think prioritization is extremely important in that you can't go to the legislature with 15 good ideas. Everybody's doing that. You have to really prioritize what's important and then work really hard to do it. And I think part of that is this council, this body being on one page. That's extremely important. If you're all supporting whatever the notion is, whatever the priority is, all the better. If you're, you're fractured, that, that's hard to do. And then also having your local delegation on your side. If you have one or two people from your local delegation who either doesn't know about your issue, doesn't support your issue, if they can't vote for it, it's hard to talk other people into voting for it. And I think we're really good at those kinds of things of developing those relationships and those strategies that are very important. We could stand here and say, boy, it's possible you could go get five and a half million dollars for your culverts next session. We'll get right on it and get, and get moving. Realistically, that's an extremely hard thing to do. Maybe is there a chance to get portions of it or different ways to figure out how to do it? Yes, that's what we're here to do is explore those options and avenues. And then do our level best with integrity and honesty. Cause relationships in your word in the legislature is, is what it's all about. If you say that you need something, you really need to need it. Because if they find out that you really didn't need it, that you might've had money by yourself to pay for it, but you came to the legislature to supplant it, you're done. So those are some of the return on investment that I think is really important. But it isn't just about next session and it shouldn't be. It should be about next session, the following session, the one after that and the one after that.
Yeah, and I, I think just to build on that a little bit, um, you know, we, um, talked about, um, talk about past successes, I consider and tell you past successes we've had. Um, I'm happy to do that. It's also good to just be honest with you about going forward. It's, it's clear, one of the major needs that you have is transportation and transportation funding. And you know, there's a couple of things I would recommend we've got to do on that. One is, um, I don't know if any of you had a contested campaign or if, you know, you were unopposed, but to me, political campaigns are about building coalitions and, and that's your ultimate success. Legislative process is exactly the same. You have to build a coalition, the better and bigger your coalition is, the more chances you have at success. Um, when I first looked at the city and went, oh my God, three legislative districts, who's going to be the champion? Jeff looked at it completely the different and was like, Cody, look at this, we've got nine potential champions we build. So and I was, I totally missed that the first time because I was thinking, dang, I'm used to one city having a champion and that's who it is. Jeff was right, exactly right. We build those to help you build those relationships with those, um, three delegations. And that's going to help us, because we can't do that. I mean, we can, we have relationships with them. Ultimately, um, you, as you know, as elected officials, you care much more about the people that are casting the ballots for you, right? They are the ones that really have the influence. So we can help you build those relationships with, um, with legislators. It, it's going to be that much more stronger. The other thing I say with that is I can talk about past transportation wins. Um, but I can tell you right now, here's, here's what will happen. We could use Judy Cliburn, I know she's retiring, but go to Judy and say, city of Sammamish has this transportation need. First thing Judy's going to say is, okay, Cody, it sounds like they, they, um, that's a worthy project. Tell me, what have they done for themselves? What have they done with their property tax capacity for the last decade? Do they have a transportation benefit district? Have they done anything there? Cause Olympia loves helping jurisdictions that are doing what they can on their own. Um, and so depending on how that question's answered, beings, I know Judy's answering that, or that's her question. If we decide transportation's a big thing, that's the first thing we'd want to sit down with you and with staff and say, okay, how are we going to answer this? What have we done with property tax? What have we done, um, with other transportation funding? Cause legislature is going to look at that and that's ultimately, they're going to be partners and we can be successful. But just being candid with you, telling you, though, you know, that's how that process works.
Karen, do you have any questions? You're good, you have the opportunity.
Um, I'll ask a question, just kind of walk me through what your process might look like. We have a very unique ask in 2018 and our legislative priorities relative to double taxation in a very small portion of Sammamish. It's a very unique problem. So it's not like, it's, it's hard to get somebody to kind of champion that because it's such a small problem. Even for our jurisdiction, she's a very small population that's dealing with it. So how do you go about kind of finding someone to champion that and actually get it to the floor for a note?
I think it's really important to understand why the law is the way it is to start with. It's pretty clear that when property's annexed, that the bond to pay that property off stays with the property. Or it stays with the person who was there. So it's very, very clear. I read through it and I went, ah, there's got to be a reason for that. I think that's where you start is say, what caused that law to be written in that manner in the first place? What are the downfalls having the law changed? And I think you, you put the pros to changing it and the cons to changing it. And you work through those issues so that when somebody asks you that question, you can say, it was written this way in 1990 or 1991, but times have changed and here's what's changed. And here's why those downfalls are no longer appropriate. So you, that's how I do it. I line those issues out so that I'm ready for all of those questions. And you get done with that and then I think you sit down with you all and you say, here's why it was written that way. Here are the pitfalls to changing it, or in other words, the hurdles that we will be going up against to try to change it. Cause there's going to be other places that are going to be affected by this as well. Do you still want to do it? Is there a possibility? And I think it's our job to really say, by looking at this, talking to the people that we have talked to, um, experts with opinions who have knowledge and history in this kind of thing. I would suggest you wouldn't go forward with it. I think it's our obligation to say that. If that's the way your analysis and the research goes. Or there is a possibility for that to be changed. Here's how I think we should do it. Champions, you know, everybody uses this word champion, but it's really applicable. Somebody who understands it, that can explain all of the things that I just went through to whoever they're talking to, who really believes in it. And then try to get other cities who may have the same problem and go forward with whatever change you may be going, going to try to do.
Because then it's pretty straightforward, you know, who, who's our alleged districts, right? We've got three of them. Who's most likely champion, who might sit on a fiscal committee, you know, with, um, for this one, it's going to go to the House Finance Committee. So you want to see who's sitting on that committee and, and it's a pretty straightforward process from there.
Who sits on the rules committee? I go as far as who are the best people to sponsor this bill? Who's going to be the person who's going to do as much as they possibly can to get a hearing for it? That's even hard sometimes. And if in hearing to get the votes to get it out of hearing, and then you've still got to go through the rules process, which sometimes people forget about that. Sometimes bills get out of hearing and everything's great and they go to rules to die. And I'm one of those people that if it's a bill that we're advocating on, I follow that thing through the entire process. And I'll write hand letters to every legislator on that rules committee, trying to get them to pull that bill. If I already don't have one who said I will pull it. And I've been very successful at that because I'm relentless. If that's my charge to try to get that bill through, that, that's my charge and I will follow that thing through. And I won't just go, well, die in rules. I may end up having to say that, but it won't be without having to put some effort into there to do everything I could to get it out of rules, to go into the other house for consideration and already have lined out who are folks in the Senate or the House when it goes over to that side that can be our champions and help get it through. That's part of the process that a lot of people don't see because it's, it's very long, it's very drawn out. And it's, it's designed that if an idea is going to pass, it better be a good idea. But there better be somebody who's working very hard, doing the work. It's, it's really easy sometimes to get a bill up for hearing and rah rah and everybody hears about the issue and it kind of goes away. It's what you do after that, that daily contact, working with staff. Working with staff in the legislature is so important. Everybody keeps talking about members, 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 members. Well, members don't do a whole lot without staff. Just like, you know, the city doesn't run without staff. It's very important to be tuned in with what they're doing, to have them help you do what you need to do. Cause there's some very talented people that are on staff and to have them in your circle of, of resources is extremely important.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, if you could look back over the things that you've done over the last five years, um, and pick one thing that you thought was, you were the most passionate about, um, that you championed, which, what would it be?
I'll go. The result happened in the last five years. And I say the result because when I was working for the State Patrol, we were going through a very difficult time in hiring troopers. And most of it was because we weren't comparable with pay. We weren't able to compete with some of the larger urban cities, some of the counties. And we were continually working with the governor's office and the legislature to try to, to minimize that disparity that we had in pay. And this is where I come into short term and long term because we started working on that in 2007. And we worked on it every year, every year, every year, every year. And we would provide data, we would provide studies, everything that we could think of to build that case so that troopers could get paid what they needed to get paid to be competitive. So that we had the best and the brightest PR troopers. The result happened after I left. But I was most proud of all the groundwork that we did, year in, year out. We didn't give up, we didn't say, well, the legislature is just not going to do it. We kept bringing information forward. We kept providing, you know, arguments to say, here's why we need to do this. Here is the detriment that is occurring. And it ended up happening after I left and I was very proud of it, even though I wasn't there to celebrate. But I know that the work that I did was pretty critical to that.
Yeah, I mean, I talked about the transportation package. I think another one I'd talk about is a transportation issue that, that I worked with on the local level. Anybody familiar with Lander Street that feeds out to the port of Seattle there? Um, terribly congested because the trains are running back and forth there all the time. And, but it was a really complicated project. It was about a hundred and 75 million dollar project. It wasn't in the state transportation package. And so we built a coalition. Again, you're, you're going to hear me talk about coalitions because I think the more we can build, help build coalitions and the more we can build bipartisan, I think that's one thing that Jeff and I bring, uh, almost no one can compare to is both of us spent our whole careers working both with Republicans and Democrats and, and building those relationships. And, and that's so important. And it was important in this project, Lander Street, that we, it was in the city of Seattle, but we ended up putting together a coalition that was the city of Seattle. It was the port of Seattle, King County came in, um, and we ended, actually ended up with Burlington Northern and cobbled together and then had some, um, Senator Murray was able to get us a tiger grant to help finish it. And so it took that coalition of five different, four different local governments in Burlington Northern to put that package together and fix that one specific project there at, at Lander Street.
We didn't have an option not to work on both sides of the aisle when I was working with patrol or any, really any state agency. It, it was just something that you don't want to polarize yourself to either side. You want to be able to walk into and speak to any legislator, regardless of whether they're a Democrat or a Republican. They may not agree with your idea or what your need is, but you have to have the ability to walk in and at least talk to whoever it is about what your issue is. And I've taken pride over that, that I've, you know, I've been very well respected on the Hill. I've been looked at as a collaborative person, uh, which is not necessarily common with cops. Cops are usually fairly black and white, right? So no, the law says it's this. Well, I was constantly having to work with people who had great ideas, how to change the law to potentially make it better. I couldn't just say, no, Senator, whoever you are, from wherever you are, that is a bad idea. It's, well, let's talk about how this might be able to work. If it improves citizen safety, um, throughput on our roadways, any of that kind of thing. So bipartisanship and the ability to talk to anybody at any time is critical, I think.
Glenn, do you have questions?
I do. Before I do, police and fire?
That's a good catch, most people wouldn't notice that.
I've, I've been in this business a while. Um, first one is, uh, tell us a little bit about how you work with staff to support the effort of our council and our agenda.
Yeah, and you know, especially, well, I think similarly to Olympia that, you know, there, there's a misconception that legislators make a lot of money, probably about as, you know, misconception about how much money city council members make. And you know, they're, they're, they're always part-time positions and staff's the one continuity, right? That's the, that's the long-term thing. And, and early on I learned part of it's because I spent a couple of years working on staff for the legislature and realized just how important staff was to the whole process. And, um, those relationships are so important to getting outcomes. Um, cause not only do they control access to their members, but then there's all the, the committee staff and. Um, cause not only do they control access to their members, but then there's all the, the committee staff and stuff that run the whole show. And so, um, a lot of times in Olympia, especially because it's such a part-time legislature, the, um, relationships with staff are, are almost more important at times than relationships with members.
So the second one is how do you plug our council members into the process in Olympia?
I think good communication is paramount to that. And each body is different in their needs and their wants. In, in some cases, maybe one person is designated from the council, maybe it's the mayor, maybe it's the deputy mayor, or maybe it's a legislative lead that we interact with on a regular basis. You're all busy. There may be something that comes up at eight 30 and there's a hearing at nine and we need to get ahold of somebody. So I think it's extremely important for us to lay down and agree upon, what is our communication strategy? What will work for you that will work for us to make sure that you are informed with what's going on? Cause nobody likes surprises. That if there's decisions to be made on a position on a bill or a compromise on something, that we can get in touch with somebody as quickly as possible. Because during legislative sessions, stuff happens really, really fast. If we can't get ahold of you in 15 minutes or a half hour, the opportunity may pass us by. So I think it's really important for us to start with, how are we going to communicate? You know, during session, it's very, very busy. Weekly meetings may not be something that occur, but certainly, you know, a bi-weekly, you know, email or communication of some sort to say, here's what Cody and Jeff have been doing. Here's some of the challenges. Here's some of the excesses, successes. Here's some other things that are going on in the legislature that we're watching on your behalf. Because there's so much that goes on, you know, occupational disease bills that come forward that are going to affect your city. Minimum wage, um, wrongful death, there's public disclosure. That's something that happens every session. And the Sunshine Committee's meeting next week. That would be something that we would communicate with you on to say, the Sunshine Committee met. Here's some of the exemptions that they're talking about. I think it would be really important for us to talk with staff about that to really have an understanding. Does this even affect you? And if it does, how would it? So that we're better informed when we're going to these meetings and listening to these. I think that's, that's critical. So to keep you apprised.
Yeah, and I would just say my, my experience with Tumwater. So Tumwater decided right at the beginning of session to hire me. So they didn't have an RFP and an interview process. They realized they, they hadn't been successful the last couple of years and they right as session started said, we want to hire somebody. They approached me and they hired me. And I think, great, now here's what we got to start to do. And started lining up them, having contact with legislators, building relationships. Well, easier for them geographically because they're right next door to Tumwater. But, you know, they, it was, there was an, okay, we're hiring Cody, he's going to go do this. And I was like, no, no, you hired Cody, Cody's going to help you and we're all going to do this as a team. Cause again, connecting them with legislators and, um, and connecting them so that they have those relationships as well. Because legislators see us all day long. They do. Really, again, what makes the difference? Another elected official from their district, constituents from their district? That's what ultimately really moves legislators and who they want to hear from. So for me, that is going to be our main job is helping you build relationships with those legislators. So you can help us do that. Cause it's not like you hire us and we're just going to go do everything. We need you involved. We need you having those relationships and contacts with legislators as, as, as well. Cause that's going to help us all be more successful.
Any other questions or? Good. Thank you both, unless you have any parting thoughts for us, but we really appreciate you guys coming in and speaking with us.
Yeah, no, we've been looking forward to it. Like I said, there was a half dozen or more RFPs that went out this, this session. This is the only one, um, that we put in for. Um, and again, thought it was challenging having your first ever, uh, lobby team. We have experience with that. I think that would be a good fit. And just the issues, I think that, you know, the covert issue and the work that we've done on that and the transportation issue, you know, I know there's a lot of issue around transit. Spent a ton of time the last seven, eight years working on transit issues. And I know some of it, you know, was discussion of maybe is there a privatization that's a solution out here? Um, you know, I don't know. Maybe that's the best one, maybe not. I would encourage, first thing, I'd want to sit down with Metro. Uh, Metro's actually sitting on this pot of money right now that they got as part of Seattle buying more hours. They funded, um, some other programs at, at Metro. And there's a pot of money sitting there right now that nobody's approached Metro yet to talk about. And it's sitting there exactly to try to work on issues like you're trying to deal with here to fix some of these issues that you currently have, um, with the transit system. And that's money that's already there and set up to go, you know, cities in King County, nobody's approached them to talk about that yet. So, you know, that would be a great opportunity to try to help you tap into some of that money and see if that was a, a solution to some of your transit issues.
DOT has grants as well. There's one grant that's due up in September. And it's specifically to help cities with transit, public transportation between cities. I don't know if staffs had the opportunity to see that or not, but those are the kind of things that, you know, we're paid to look for to help the city and then help you do your best foot forward in applying for those or getting some support for them. It's been a pleasure and an honor. I feel, uh, very fortunate to have met all of you. I missed the first interview because I was out of town on, on another business and I apologize for that. But I look forward to the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. Good to meet you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Karen, good to see you again. I hope you're hand feel.
We haven't already had surgery.
Oh, that was interesting.
So before you all run away, there was that proclamation that Rita sent. Yes, and so, um, I just need, did everyone have a chance to see it?
I did.
Okay, great. You can read it. There it is. And I've been asked to sign this, but I didn't want to sign it without asking for, you saw it?
Yeah, I did.
Without council support, so it's the same one I think we did last year, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I, yes, I saw it, but I didn't read the whole.
All right.
Cool.
And that's it.
I think that's it.
Okay, that was easy.
We are adjourned. I moved to adjourn. Second, twenty, twenty-three minutes.